Dementia and delirium, that's all that's mine. It's just the stuff we did today. Okay.
Oh wait, never mind, she's going. I thought it was Mr. Baird.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead. I don't know off the top of my head. I don't know off the top of my head. If you know the stuff that we talked about in the lecture, you'll be fine. She was just asking bad questions, so. As long as you know the stuff we talked about in the lecture, what they do, which are the all sorts of things.
We're gonna try to ask a question, but we're not the person stuck out that was asking it earlier. It was about the, um, Korssopf, Wernicke's or Wernicke-Korssopf. Is that?
Okay.
And the thiamine, is it completely reversible?
I would say partially reversible. I would go more that direction. It's not like if they get treated with thiamine, and it kinda depends on how far along they are. So maybe in the early stages, it's somewhat reversible. As they get to later stages, they're not gonna be able to just take thiamine and regain back to where they were to begin with.
It might stop, it may stop the continuation or worsening or something like that.
Right, and it is the only one that is somewhat reversible. Like, they may give back some function.
Okay.
But they're not, yeah, if it's going on for a long time, it's not like they're gonna go all the way back to the beginning because they get treated.
Okay.
But what the book explained it. Okay, somebody here told me the book, it kind of explains that. I had another person who was asking me kind of the difference between the Wernicke and the Korsskopf and how they fit together. And so I was doing a little more reading about that while we were on break. And they can occur, basically, it's kind of like there are different philosophies on it. They can occur together and be called all one thing, Wernicke-Korsskopf. They can occur separately. Some people believe that you have to have that acute Wernicke before you get to the Korsskopf. But some other physicians or other researchers believe that that's not true, that you can just have the chronic version without ever having had an acute episode. So, just to kind of throw out a little more information on those two things. The treatment, I mean, the thiamine treatment and stopping drinking is the treatment, either way, but.
Thank you.
The alcohol dementias. Anything else? Okay, Mr. Baird, you're up if you're done.
Yes, we have one question, she said.
Oh, okay, okay.
On the drugs for yours, you were saying like the remandatine affects the behavior and the emotions, and then the top four affected something else.
More on cognition, but the cognitive effects. And that's one of the reasons that you see the first four used more for early stage because they've got more cogni-, the cognitive stuff kinda comes first, and then the behavioral and emotional and motivating ten later. Like, the cognitive, the first affects you, so. The first four, I think, are approved for like mild to moderate. And then the, um, the other, the next one is just moderate to severe as they get worse. And then they can be used in combination. Did that answer that?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. So, there were quite a few questions out on the discussion board when I looked at it this morning, and I posted those responses. So, if anybody, um, was not satisfied, in other words, if there was something else that I needed to clarify on those questions, feel free to ask those as we're on right now. But I'll entertain other questions. Okay?
Is COPD, do you have all of those disorders, like COPD?
Oh, good question. No, COPD is a umbrella term. In fact, there's a fourth illness that is sometimes included in that list, and sometimes asthma is not included in that list anymore. It went through a period of time it was, and then it's kind of, kind of tricky because there are periods where the patient's function is fairly normal. Okay, so, um, but no, COPD is more like what a primary care provider might assign to the disease, or a pulmonologist might be more specific.
So you can have like asthma and?
Yes, you could have. From what Iggy suggests is a lot of the times asthma will become chronic monchitis if it's not well managed. And so, um, if you change providers at some point in your adult life, you might be labeled as having chronic monchitis, when in reality, you're started way back from you were a young.
Okay, I think I got it.
Other questions?
Yes. We have one in the med.
Okay.
So, on the TB skin test, when it says the enduration over five millimeters of like hardening of tissue, comma, not erythema, erythema is positive, does that mean that the hardening of the tissue is the positive sign and not erythema or not redness is a positive sign? That was kinda worded weird, I think.
Okay, so, so hopefully this, all the sites heard the question well enough, because that's pretty distinct for me, so hopefully you heard it clearly. What's that talking about is that you can have inflammation, that redness of the skin, with, with, um, any type of tissue injury. Remember, we talked about that. You can have it in response to an allergic situation. The enduration is a more aggressive thing where the, that reddened area is then firm. Okay, it's no longer soft like this tissue's around it. It feels, it feels, um, firm is the best word I can come up with. I'm sorry, I don't, I can't think of a better word. Um, and so that's what it's really talking about, is, is that five millimeters is still going to be red, but it's because it's red and firm, that's what it's talking about. And the 10 millimeters is, um, positive for somebody who has a, um, healthy immune system. Greater than five is if you have like a immunocompromised where you're having that energy. So like HIV patients or whatever.
So if the, the correct reading, if it was five mm of redness and then two mm of enduration, you would read it as two, as two mm, that would be the correct answer? Because the redness, you would want the enduration and not the redness?
I think you would just describe both components. If that makes sense, um.
Mr. Baird, first. When I worked in the ER and we all, we had to use check skin tests for the boy helping him when she wasn't around, I would close my eyes so the redness wouldn't distract me. And then I would feel for the enduration, and then I would measure that enduration. And I would, after work, I would open my eyes before, but I'd measure my enduration and, uh, that was my, it would ask how many, no matter what I would count with the enduration.
Okay.
It's unclear, it has to be very elaborate, yes?
Yes.
I mean, what's the 10 millimeters?
Go ahead. Maybe I'm getting my numbers mixed up. Refer to your diagnostic report, you, okay, it'll tell you those numbers. Okay, so maybe it is two and five. Two times five is 10, maybe that's where I'm getting that number, I don't know. And five for a healthy person, there you go. Is that correct, Mrs. Martinez, do you remember?
It sounds correct, I can't swear to it, it's gonna be embarrassing.
We still can't hear you, Mrs. Martinez.
Oh, it wasn't yesterday.
We still can't hear you, all week.
Okay, uh, I don't, I don't remember positive because it was.
For some reason, we're not getting any sound from you, Mrs. Martinez, we just see you talking. There it is.
Okay, I have, uh, early onset, I think Alzheimer, like, it happened before yesterday, so I really can't say.
Okay. Well, well, we, well, when Mrs. Hague was going through those stages, I told the students, you know, if they have no symptoms, that means every one of them in the classroom were in stage one, and I have stage two because, because I have trouble with my words and certain, oh. Unfortunately, I've had, I've been in stage two for close to 20 years, I'm afraid, though. All right, other questions? Question here, go ahead.
Um, okay, so, just a quick question, um, am I just correct in understanding that energy is just the body's inability to produce an immune response, like, I mean, for HIV or just immunomalize?
Yes, that is true.
Okay, and so, then how would, on the quantitative, you're on gold into, in T test, how would, um, energy create a false negative?
Let me think about that for just a second. A false, a false negative simply means that you don't get a positive definitive result that says, "I've been exposed to TV." So, the lack of immune response in that test is, is the false negative, that's what that's saying.
Okay, so that test is that really the immune response and not the actual?
Right. Yes.
Thank you.
Very good question. Other questions? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so the airfield cavities that are left in the lungs after all the data drained out from TB, um, so is the big problem because it stays inflated, so it causes, what's that, what's the big problem with the airfield sacks?
Okay, so the question is, what's the problem with those airfield sacks that are left behind when somebody has active TB, if incision occurs and all the boot cranes and the air going to cough that? Well, that represents tissue damage and scarring. And so, in some ways, it's twofold. In some ways, it's very similar to the alveolar destruction that we see with emphysema, in that you're taking up alveoli in that process, you're eliminating a portion of alveoli. Now, when you think about it, and I think, I think the numbers are like estimated 26 million alveoli in the adult lung, healthy lung, you think, well, I got plenty to spare. But when this is scattered in multiple places, it's the scarring then that interferes airflow as well. So then it becomes a lot like the core pulmonary, that becomes a form of resistance even to blood flow, not just to ventilation. So it affects their ability to need their gas exchange aid and can affect pulmonary cardiac issues. So the fibrotic or the scarring is, is just as much a part of that process. There are, there are other types of respiratory problems that also cause respiratory scarring. Okay, so that's, those are not immune to.
And any scar tissue is just not functioning, is it?
That's right. Scar tissue is your universal replacement for healthy tissue when the body cannot regenerate the healthy tissue in the first place. So typically, when, when tissue is damaged and the, and the healthy tissue is close in proximity to each other, the neighboring cells can often fill in the void. And if the gap is big in comparison to the cell size that is there, it typically fills in primus, primus relation tissue or scar tissue.
So, coming back to Nick's question.
Okay, roll that.
So if they have just one of those bronchitis and physiobolism, it's considered COPD?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't matter if you have one of those three or the other one, we had a previous textbook talk about, which is trophy exorcist, which is, for lack of a better word, it's like disease-produced atelectasis in the smallest of the areas.
As far as labs and diagnostics, um, for like ABGs, do you just want us to know, do you want us to know the actual ABG value?
No.
Okay, just know that, like, it's, and same as COPD, it'd be fixed, no, too?
That's right.
Which would lead to chronic blood gas problems, correct?
Monochinococci and hypercapnia.
Okay, and then on, uh, like CBC, do you want us to know the exact, exact values for like RBC, WO and N?
The only one I really want you to know by this point in the CBC is the white blood cell count.
The white blood cell count?
In that context of the, because, again, when a client presents with respiratory distress, we want to know if it's a chronic condition or an acute condition, and if it's acute, we want to know is that atelectasis, is that monogent, is that pneumothorax? We need to figure out how best to make that last need, and that CBC helps direct us towards something infectious.
So, in relation to the ansar fields, um, in relation to the ansar fields, here we go with the 20 to 40 that's in our blood and oxygen book, or the 30 to 40?
Do not worry about white blood cell differences. There will be some of ourselves, very, very few, who will be interested in that information. But as a whole, interesting as a whole, we're only represent, we're only interested in total white blood. We let primary providers, the respiratory nurses, and PAs, and physicians decide whether that's viral or whether that's, um, an allergic response, or whether that's leukemia, et cetera.
Mr. Baird, we got some rapid-fire things in there, we missed part of it. Going way back to the first part of the question that she asked, before we talked about white blood cells, she said something about, do we need to know the exact value of something? We didn't quite get all of that very first part.
Okay, she asked, do we need to know, do the students need to know, um, the normals of ABGs? And I said, no. No, those are things that are covered in adult, too. The only thing I want you to know is, what's the context that we might see it ordered? Okay, so somebody who looks like they are either hypoxemic, or they have a high CO2 level, which we call hypercapnic. And those are the two chronic changes that happen with the COPDs, or an acute change for somebody in an acute asthma attack. And so, you don't, they don't need to know any normals, just they need to know which direction those values go. And they both, one goes up and one goes down.
Okay, I think we're good with that answer, thank you, that clarified it for us.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so the chart on 560A, or, or page 560A, chart 30-5, the bullet points, is that of all of the COPDs? Because it's under the asthma section in the book, or symptomatic, you know, why we would put somebody, why somebody, get somebody going O2?
Okay, so, ask me your question again, then?
Last word, the question was asked about what were the symptomatics on a standing order and, and was referred to this chart? So does that cover all?
The last, the last bullet point represents respiratory distress. So it doesn't matter if a patient has COPD or not, that's how you recognize respiratory distress. So, a healthy person who has any of those symptoms might be experiencing pneumothorax because they sadly knew their eustiridil pneumonia was, and they present with those symptoms. We'll presume they have, we'll diagnose the medical condition, we'll diagnose the symptoms that are responding to that, and that's what we treat. And so my reference on blackboard is to that most C, immediate emergency care, that is, I, I use that list because that's the very well-written list of what respiratory distress looks like.
Or standing O2.
For standing oxygen. Okay?
And on page 530, um, I know we've talked about this, and I'm not trying to be redundant, but, um, we don't need an order for humidification, but the box panel needs me to think, that do, um, that's what box, chart 28, that's what the second bullet.
The second bullet, what I was referring to is that, that heated humidification, as opposed to a bubble humidifier, which oxygen just flows through at a humidification valve. The problem with a bubble humidifier, like the picture that you see on page 531, is it has a pop-off valve. So oxygen therapy runs higher than a certain number, I don't remember what that number is, it probably depends upon the brand, that pop-off valve will release, and the oxygen will go out of the top of the canister instead of through the device of the patient. So in order to humidify those higher levels of oxygen, you have to use the heated humidification in a bubble humidifier. So that's really what I was referring to, because that's, that's additional, um, expense for the facility, and somebody needs to pay for that. Okay, other questions?
There were the labs, uh, for the Columbia, the CBC, you want us to solely focus on white blood cells rather than?
Yes. And then the, on the red blood cell, he involves the manner, just recognize that somebody can be short of breath because of aemia, not always because of a respiratory trouble. But no, I'm not, I'm not interested in memorizing those male and female components of that.
In somebody that is, um, that is a chronic COPD patient, um, that, they're good at like 88% oxygen, but if it goes lower than that, yes.
Okay, so the question is, did you find out the definition, girl?
No, and, yeah, that's pretty much it.
The question was that a COPD patient is quote-unquote "good" at 88%, but let me clarify, we're still looking at whether the patient was symptomatic or not. So not all COPD patients could tolerate 88% because they normally might run 91 to 93. And so when they get to 88, they're gonna feel more dysmantic, more orthotic, more distressed than what their baseline is, and we're gonna respond to that appropriately. It's those clients who routinely want an 88 that, that that's their, that's their baseline. And so, um, one of the things we have to clarify when they present is, how does your breathing feel at this moment compared to how it feels on a routine day when they're not sick? Oh, this is exactly how we go, and stay this way until I collapse and exhaust again, that?
There's really not a magic number.
There's not a magic number.
It just has to be symptomatic.
Symbiotic against the core. Other questions?
It looks like we're good in Tonka.
Okay, well, let me emphasize again, even though we're focusing on specific conditions, whether they're mental health ones like Mrs. Hague gave you, or physiological ones like, like my lectures will be, we're not diagnosing whether they have emphysema, whether they have asthma, whether they have chronic monchitis. We use those, um, medical diseases to help you cluster the information, address them based on their nursing problem. Do they have a compromised airway? Do they have impaired gas exchange? Do they have an ineffective breathing pattern? Do they have a nutritional deficit? Are they struggling meeting their rest and exercise need? That's the focus. So when you prepare for the test, put the emphasis of your study, whether it's medications or, or, um, the other components of my lecture, focus on that nursing care component, which includes the assessment. Okay, so the assessment is gonna help you identify which of those problems are the biggest problem for that patient. A respiratory client doesn't automatically have a, a gas exchange problem, yet. Okay, so, so, so recognize, most of my questions deal with assessment and understanding what, what you discover from that assessment and what you do next, or if the, if the assessment that is already there, then what are you gonna do with that? Okay? So with that being said, I'm gonna show you, unless there's additional questions, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put the, um, in-class activity up there for you, and I'm gonna give you a suggestion how to make it look less clutter in that third column. Don't do that to me. Maybe? Don't know why it's not letting me. Okay. But it won't let me, won't let me focus with it being out. There you go, that's crazy. So what I'm gonna do is, very simply, in this column, drug class, they are alphabetized. Antibiotics, NITV agents, antitussives, then the bronchodilators, A, B, M.
Mr. Baird, we have a blank screen in med. I was wondering, does Tonka have a blank screen?
We have a blank screen, too. I think he's just talking through it.
Okay.
Well, no, I'm sending it to you. It's showing you on my confidence monitor, but it took me forever for it to even focus, so.
Okay, I lied. We do have a black screen, too. But you were describing it really well, so it was working.
Okay, well, all right. So basically, that first column, it's all alphabetized. So after bronchodilators, that's corticosteroids. And I just lost everything. All right. Corticosteroids, and then expectorants, and then your last one was the.
Can you post it for us?
Lupatrin receptor antagonists, all right? The last column over there, the examples, so for antibiotics, it's cephalazolin and ceftriaxone. Your TB agents, there are four, ethimbutal, isonazid, pyrazinamide, and rifampin. Your antitussives are codeine and extra warfan. Your anticholinergic agents are atropine and iprotopium. Betaduagonists are albuterol and levelbuterol. So, um, the question out on, on blackboard that said, what's the two drugs and do on the app? It's albuterol and iprotopium. Methylzantines, amonothrin and theoplin. Corticosteroids was the budesonide and prednisone. Expectorants, isirbafensin. And your lupatrin receptor antagonists are your montelukis and zafirlukis. All right, so, in that column under side effects, my suggestion to you would be to take a separate piece of paper and list these according to the list that I'm gonna read down to you, and tape over that, so you don't have to try to figure out the lines when you're studying. All right, so antibiotics, the three that are the side effects are nausea, nephrotoxicity, and allergic response. Those are the three that I want you to remember. Nausea, nephrotoxicity, and allergic response. The anti-TV agents is jaundice, liver injury, which is what produces the jaundice, discolored body fluids, neuritis, nausea, and visual changes. And those can be multiple different things, because not only do we have peripheral neuritis, we also have optic neuritis. So neuritis of the optic nerve. Uh-huh. Jaundice, liver injury, discolored body fluids, neuritis, nausea, visual changes. Antitussives, the primary one I want you to recognize there is drowsiness and constipation. Because many of the antitussives are narcotics, you could add some of those other ones that are commonly attributed, so sometimes an antitussive might make a patient nauseated as well. Anticholinergics, we have all this, the typical ones, dry mouth, blurred vision, but we also have tachycardia and cough. Hittite can be one for anticholinergic, but I think I had it listed for something else as a hyperality. Okay, the beta agonists, because we're stimulating, some of them stimulate both the lungs and the heart, produce tachycardia, nervousness, tremor. the heart, produce tachycardia, nervousness, tremors, and nausea. The methylzantines produce the same four symptoms, tachycardia, nervousness, tremors, and nausea. The corticosteroids, hyperglycemia, delayed wound healing, tachycardia, and hypertension. The expectorants are nausea and drowsiness. And your leukotrine receptor antagonists are headache and liver injury. Yes, if, if it progressed to the point where it was detectable, it could cause jaundice as well because of that injury to the liver. I don't know if it's common, it's just a potential. Okay, any other questions about anything?
Are you going to study the?
Mr. Baird, is that something that you can pull in as they have, can't see that these two are mistaken? Other slides?
I might be able to just generate the list of side effects maybe. I'm always hesitant to post answer keys out on blackboard because then they roll over to future semesters and that defeats the whole intent of having a learning activity, so, no, I don't really think I can.
They said the side effects would be very notable.
Yeah.
And someone asked, who could repeat the side effects today? Antibiotics with it? Okay.
Antibiotics is nausea, nephrotoxicity, and allergic response.
We have one question in Tonka, they want to make sure they don't show vomiting as a side effect for anything, is that correct?
Anytime a person has nausea, they can certainly have vomiting as well.
Okay, I'll tell them to add that, thanks.
Yeah, focus on those, yeah. Okay?